All right, we'll call this meeting to order 6:00 PM February 15. We need to, actually, in point bill is an alternate.
You can.
All right. Right. Agenda?
So there are a couple of administration administrative changes that took place after the agenda was initially posted. In case number P 2206, it's actually 21 Blueberry Lane and not 31. And in case P 2207, it should state Jennifer and not Jeremy. In old business, I've added S, just an update for the Alternative Housing Committee. And G, just to have a discussion with the board regarding the findings of the town engineer on Ridge Road. I have a few other announcements as far as the agenda goes. Case, case P 2202, 2202, 2203, 2204, and 2205 were sent about our notices that had the wrong meeting date. So none of these cases can take place tonight. I have reached out to all of the agents and the applicants on all of these cases. And I have proposed to the board, or I'm proposing to the board, that we hold a meeting on March 1st to hear case 2202, 2203, and 2204. Case 2205 is fine with waiting until the March meeting. So that's my proposal to the board to accommodate these applicants sooner than later.
That was the date that was sent to them?
It's proposed. I didn't, and nothing's concrete. I just said, this is what I'm going to ask the board and see how it goes.
So I'm not really sure how this works, but I think what we probably need now is a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the stipulation. I think we roll it right in to have a meeting on March 1st to be able to hear these three cases.
Yeah, so moved.
Tom, did you motion?
I gladly motioned, yes.
Okay.
He just motioned.
He motioned as I, as I said it, Tom's second.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those, oh, I'm sorry.
Are we motioning to have that meeting on Monday or we?
Tuesday, March 1st.
Tuesday, March 1st. So we're voting on doing that now.
Right, yes, and approving the agenda to also hear those. We're kind of rolling it all in. I don't know what the proper procedure is, so we're going to roll it all into one.
It kind of ties into the approval of the agenda. That's the reason why you're amending the agenda.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right, so anybody who's here for those three cases, we apologize. March 1st. And for 2205, that'll be March 15th.
Correct.
All right. Moving right along, item number two, voluntary merger of pre-existing lots. This is case P 2206. Mary Lou Banker and John. Help me out.
Gillius.
Thank you, Gillius. This is up 21 Blueberry Lane.
Are the roadways correct on that?
Blueberry Lane off of Alton Shores Road. Alton Shore Roads is off of Alton Mountain Road. Very Lane is off of Alton Shores Road.
Okay, you're looking at the tax map?
Just that I know where.
Correct. You know, Alton Mount, but you're correct. That's what I thought.
So that should state Alton Shores and not Alton Mountain Road? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, Alton Mountain Road goes down, takes a right, goes out by John's house.
So can we, so the building inspector wants to chime in on that?
So try and figure out where you are, Roger.
Yes, they all do.
You'll see that, and it's hard, you kind of detail to see it clear, but it does this lot.
Oh, yeah.
Does not.
Yeah, the, the
banker lot, the other one, Julia's lot, does only fronts on Alton Mountain Road. It's where Alton Mountain Road continues beyond Alton Shores Road.
Okay, yeah, right. Blueberry Lane is down here.
Right, and, and this lot is only accessed from Blueberry Lane.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, so is that where we get the Alton Mountain and Blueberry?
Yes. If you go, you go down Alton Shores Road.
Yep.
Has Frohawk, Larry, Scott, across from Scott's little road that runs down there.
But that doesn't touch Alton Shores Road.
It just goes to bottom lot.
That's all foreign territory.
Oh, East Alton.
Can't get there.
East Alton.
So is there anything tricky here? I don't see anything.
Yeah, I don't see anything tricky.
There's nothing outstanding, and I didn't even list any conditions precedent because I didn't find a need to.
The only thing I could see is, are we sure there's no mortgages that have to be?
There are no mortgages. That was listed on page two.
Page two?
Yep, not applicable.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything from the board? Pretty quiet here.
I don't see much wrong with it.
No.
I'll make a motion that we approve. We don't, we don't approve it. We, what do we do?
Yep.
Approve it.
We approve the
Application.
Application of P 2206.
Second.
Actually, you were moving the merger.
merger, not the application.
The application for merger.
We'll correct the notes, so, application for merger.
We never really accepted the application.
Right, can you specify with that motion that it's for map 10 lots 28 and 28A?
It is for map 10, 28, and 28A.
Second. All right, any further discussion?
Is there, should we have any public input?
It's, there's, there's no real public input on items like this.
Voluntary. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next up, case P 2207. Building permit permission request on the Class 6 road. John and Jennifer Irons.
Just so that you know, Mr. Chairman, the fire department did not see any issues, but they did want to see driveway length, et cetera, and any plans or any information in that regards, and I hadn't seen anything submitted since he made that comment last Friday. So they might want to look at the driveway situation before they make any potential further comments. I'm not sure. Just wanted to, yeah.
Well, if the applicants talk to the fire department, I don't think there'd be any difficulty. I know the area intimately. And Layton Mills Road used to be part of Chestnut Cove, and then it went, when Route 28 was built, it cut them, cut it off. And there are three properties there. This one, part that belonged to Juliette Peaverton, which is in the easement right now. And then on the other side, you have the CV family. But that that road would be good to have it controlled that way, because for a while there, people were doing a lot of dumping in there. And the base is terrible. I mean, it would be good to just upgrade it as a good gravel road. I mean, it once was paved, but you know, there are birch trees like this that are growing up in it. And it is definitely the, what Scott had said was that the designated access, which was supposed to be a split access for those two lots, is not a safe access. This is a much safer access. Unfortunately, that curve has reverse camber. A number of people that come down that hill and almost go off the bridge into the brook. So I mean, I think that their step is they have to go to the selectmen and get, and meet the Class 6 approval.
Well, it's got to come through this board first.
Well, we can't grant it to them.
No.
Right, the planning board just makes recommendations to the board of selectmen.
I would make a motion to recommend to the selectmen that they approve the use of Layton Mills Road.
For driveway.
For a driveway. And that will also protect the CV property, because they, they were worried, they have a no entry sign and whatnot. They used to put logs across there. So if someone's living there, it's going to guard it.
Aye.
Not Jeremy.
I wish. I roughly measured the length.
Can you?
Yeah, what, yeah, why don't you, why don't you come up to the table?
And I suppose.
And if you can, you can just make sure you speak into a microphone, announce yourself, so we're, I guess. We'll open public input, yes. Well, so if you just speak into the microphone, announce your name.
My name's John Irons. Property owner, right.
Brad Hunter, possibly the contractor to build the home.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so, so thank you for coming here tonight. So you just got your resounding support over here from Mr. Hoops, but the, just so that we're fully understanding, because I guess I, you, Virgil, you asked questions about this prior to the meeting. I'd asked questions as well to make sure that I was wrapping my head around it. But you're requesting the waiver for the liability waiver.
Correct.
But you are also proposing to make the improvements to the road up to town standards, or at least up for your section. Is that how I understand this?
I talked to Scott, the road agent, and so I asked about improvements, and he said, well, the way he understands it, it's not improvements up to town standards. It would be improvements such as if a culvert is needed, and bring it up to like accessible, good accessibility, like a good driveway, so that emergency vehicles could get in and out when needed.
Okay.
But if it's going to be like building a, you know, Class 5 road, then it's probably not going to happen.
Okay, so that, I think that helps me understand a little bit better, understanding that the reasoning for going for the waiver to begin with, so that the intent is not to bring it up to road standards, town of Alton, but certainly to make it accessible for your use.
And better than it is now.
But it's supposed to be brought up to minimum town standards.
No, it, it means classify, classification for the selectment's Class 6 road, so that they meet the, the emergency vehicle. I think it's something like 14 feet, roughly. I don't have the papers in front of me, but that's, that was what we've always approved. We don't approve it, the selectmen are the only ones that can do that.
The maximum of 14 feet.
Yeah, they're only going in a little ways just to access their property, and they're right on the corner. I don't see that as an issue.
Well, there's wetlands on the corner, so to get past that and to kind of pick a natural spot to go in.
Get beyond this old suburb. You're going to go in, what, a couple hundred feet to?
About 475 to 485.
Okay. And that's pretty flat in there, and then it takes off.
Yeah, it's nice compared to the, the access off of the main road.
What was, is that all wet on the main road?
Yeah, there's delineated wetlands that takes up a lot of the road frontage.
A lot of it or all of it?
There's a little spot at the left-hand corner. I guess it would be the southern corner, but it's where the driveway would happen. It shows it on the septic design, but it's really a tough spot.
Mr. Chairman?
Plus, anything better getting off that hill anyways.
Yeah.
Down through that hill there.
Right.
Yes.
Brad, so, and John, there was one outstanding item, and that was to talk to Scott down at the highway department to get the exact distance in feet and sort of that, the road section.
Yeah, I had a conversation with him today.
Okay, so if you can provide us with that information, or if you have that now.
I just, I just measured it, and I, I did tell him, but nothing was put in writing or anything.
Okay, and how many feet was that?
About 475 to 485. From the edge of the pavement.
Thank you.
I can't tell from this, but what is the length of the property line on that side?
It's tiny.
Can't read it, even with my glasses.
I have a magnifier.
202, 105, 150, 54, and 40. Add those up, that's what it is.
Say those again?
Actually, 1375, 202, 105, so 305, and another 150. So about two-thirds of the way down his property is where they want to go in.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out, yeah.
It's, you know, you'll, you'll be quiet back there then, except for the road rumblers.
One way or the other, house is going to be placed in the general vicinity that.
Because that, that original layout where somebody started cutting originally, just the boulder entrance.
It's incredible, yeah.
A little rough. Yeah. You don't need anything from us, you're just a recommendation to the selectman.
I think so, yeah. I'm not really sure what the, how the process goes, but we knew we had to come here first.
Yeah, no, as far as I'm concerned, that's smart move. And it's, it's a level entrance, so it's not a problem in maintaining or doing anything with the road, I mean.
Yeah, it's a better spot.
I think we have to have a motion to make that recommendation.
Can I just add something? I think your motion should state something that they provide the driveway access information to the fire department.
Well, as well as the, you know, road agent.
Yeah, because it is a town road, but it's Class 6.
Right, well, he's going to get the driveway permit from the road agent and provide that information to the fire department.
I'll make a motion that we forward a recommendation to the selectmen and with it also have the concept of having the information forwarded to the fire department and to the road agent regarding the location of the drive and the driveway.
Okay, we have a motion?
Yep. And that is for P 2207, lot 15, map 15, lot 30-1.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Russ. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Oh, there you go. Next step, selectmen. Right, the old business, review and adoption of the amended construction observation guidelines, finally.
One more time. Hopefully this is the last time I look at these, because every time I look at them, I find something else.
Don't look at them.
I'm done looking at them.
Yeah, I did go through these the other night and
So I've added everything that we've talked about on, throughout our workshops, our last meeting. I did find a few things here and there, just for, you know, continuity when you, when you're reading through the document. I think the biggest thing, the two biggest things that I wanted to point out is how we change the changed. Wait with me for a second. We changed constructon, construction inspector to construction observer. So then I went through the document and changed things that were inspected to observed. So that's throughout the document.
In the observation logs.
Yeah, so there were a couple places in here that sort of conflicted to, it referred to an observation report. So when I looked in the definition section, there's an observation log, so I referred everything that referred to a report to a log. Because there's no definition for an observation log, I mean, report, sorry. There are just two other things I wanted to point out, but I want you to discuss if you have any other questions first.
Hearing no questions?
Okay. So I'd like to direct you to page 10. This is the construction observations introduction. The sections to where I highlighted it in green, so this is what we talked about at the last meeting on having the town engineer include some, the methodology of how he came up with a construction estimate. And it includes having to provide the sources of data, and sort of where, where they got that information from.
So he's got to back up his numbers.
Yeah, so I don't know if you wanted to just quickly, you know, kind of review that and see if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Yes.
Makes sense.
Okay. If you're all good with that, on page 11. Under 4.2 Construction Observations Organization, I added a caveat at the end of that first paragraph there that starts with, and if conflicts arise, if you guys can take a look at that and see if that's appropriate.
Yeah, so it should be, if there's any conflict, they bring it up immediately.
Right to the board.
Right, right to here, right as soon as possible.
Right.
Smart.
Faster.
Right, because it didn't, it didn't guide the developer to what to do. I'm having a problem with the town engineer, what do I do? It guides you to do everything else except for that, so I figured, you know, adding that in.
Before it festers up, that
Exactly.
Then we hash it out.
Yep. Yep.
Good addition.
Virgil, you mentioned at the last meeting to change things that referred to the town planner, change it to the planning department.
Yeah.
There, and I did for the most part, but there are a few spots in here that I left it as town planner, just because that has to do with, the town planner goes on sidewalks, and the town planner attends the pre-construction meetings. So anything that had to do with those two specific items, I left as town planner. Everything else was planning department.
Yes, I have a dumb question. I don't know, I think it was like 10 years ago or so, we we buried the way in which proposed roads were paid for. And in some cases, people put up a bond or cash or whatever else.
I can speak to that.
And then in other cases, what people did was, they said they'd take care of the road, and, and until the road was approved, they wouldn't get any building. So I don't know where we stand anymore.
Okay, so may I speak to that?
Yep.
So what you're referring to is listed in subdivision regulations.
Okay.
It doesn't live in this document.
Right.
The only thing that lives in this document talks about providing different types of security, like a bond or a letter of credit, things like that. So what you're talking about doesn't live in here.
Anything else?
I'm, I'm all set.
So anything that you outlined in green are little changes
Yep.
that we didn't do the last time we talked.
Correct, that took place after our last meeting, and it's really just sort of buttoning things up, administrative stuff.
No, it looks good. Okay.
Lot of nitty gritty.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a lot of cleaning up on this, a lot.
What do we need to do? We, we make a proposal at this meeting and then vote on it at the next meeting? I don't know, I'm not sure.
No, I think we can make the
Yeah, you can make the motion to adopt it tonight.
I hope so.
Just because we've, we've addressed it.
You want to move on?
We, yeah, and we addressed it at the last meeting too, so, and we talked about changes.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the town of Alton Construction Observation Guidelines, draft dated 2/10/2022.
Seconded by Bill. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A big one, finally. It's been a couple of years.
That's good. That's good.
All right, so next on old business B, the review of application from Belinda McLean to become a planning board alternate. And I don't see her here tonight, huh?
Nope.
I regret didn't mention the bottom lines here, the application should not be accepted for any of the following reasons. One, if the person has an active application, which I guess she doesn't now, right?
Well, technically she still does because she still hasn't met the conditions precedent, though it's still not a signed site plan.
So I more ask for that, the second line.
These, these are just
Board, was that just against Tom, was that against the board?
It's just, that's just a generalization, so it may not, it may or may not apply to her, it's just a general, if someone has a claim against the board or even conflicts with board members.
Well, that's, that's what we're asking, because she sent that letter in.
Right, so if you guys consider that sort of a claim against the board, it's up to you guys on how you classify that. So if you feel like that is, is, could be a potential issue, then I, I would not accept the application as an alternate.
And we talked with her about it, and she had the opportunity to pull that back. And she didn't pull it back, she didn't, she didn't tear it up or rescind it or anything like that. She just said that has nothing to do with, with this, which it does.
Right.
You know, so I think that in itself should you know, disregard her as far as being an alternate, in my opinion.
I think anybody should be able to apply to be an alternate.
Right, but she did it at, she did
At the wrong time.
She brought the application.
Yes.
Yeah, but I, I mean, you know, once her application is accepted or finished, then there's no problem with it, as long as they meet the requirement of meeting, going to three meetings and, you know, finding out whether they like the nitty gritty or not.
Right, and you would, you, at that point, you would follow the criteria that's listed right above that?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, she falls into that, those categories.
Yeah, I, I think at this point, it would be wise to, you know, put it off, let her apply later on, once she's finished off all her application duties and things like that. One of the things is, is the person knowledgeable? That's a, I think that's an important criteria, we need to have people who are knowledgeable in this sort of thing. If we can get them.
Different fields.
True, right, in different fields, but it says knowledgeable. So I think that that's something that we should consider. Well. Do they have time to attend the meetings? Oh, true, right. She, you know, she didn't come tonight. That's a good point. Anyway, I would recommend that we just hold her application in advance until after the, she has satisfied the, the requirements that she has for application for her home business. Once that's done, then we can think about it.
Is that a motion?
I saw recommendation, I can make it as a motion if you'd like. I'll make that as a motion.
I'd also like to see the whole complaint business cleared up too.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't want to get into the details in that, I think if we do, we should go into non-public, but
Well, I can amend my motion to say, and the complaint issue has been cleared up, leave it general like that. So it would be two things, it would be, one would be to get her application and that she's in currently in process with the board settled. And then, once the complaint issues are clear, clear it up, then we can consider an application.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Right, seconded. Any further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against?
Jane.
All right. This next one. This is complicated.
May I speak to this?
Sure.
Okay, so it's really not complicated. In all honesty, it's really not. So the focus of tonight on this discussion is to have a board member make a motion as listed on page three, top of page three. Any board member should make the following motion. So these are my recommendations, don't have to follow them, things can stay the way they are. I recommend that you move forward with my recommendation for tonight. This way, this fixes things, it gets everything back on track.
Well, I don't feel as though I'm in a conflict of interest. I went up and helped set trusses, I do not get paid up there, I have no monetary value up there at all. I went up and helped my brother set trusses. I mean, if I was getting paid, if I was doing the house, I would say I'd have to step aside, but I am not getting paid or nothing, I went up and helped my brother. I have nothing to do with Scott up there. That's not the only factor in all of this, Virgil, just so I made the motion. Right. It's a conflict of interest, she's saying. Well, that, that is Not a conflict of interest. So that was, that was one of the, the, the items that, that was an issue with the whole, what took place? And I think I started us unfortunately down the wrong path.
So can I, can I add to what he just commented on? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
So it's not only, so it's not only, Virgil, it's not only the fact that you're not getting paid, so you might not have a personal conflict of interest of that.
No.
But you're, you're, it also includes, it also includes family members and business associates. So your brother is a family member and Scott is your business associate.
So that means Roger can't vote on half the town. That means I can't vote on half the town.
Well, if you're working on, if you're working on an applicant's
You're saying
building, then you should absolutely recruit yourself.
That's I went up and helped my brother, I do not get paid, I don't charge my brother, I have no monetary value or anything else up there.
Right.
But you're saying if we have an association with somebody, that we shouldn't be making motions or voting? But we've lived here all our lives, we've got association with everybody in town.
Here's another way of looking at this thing, is, he's working on the building. All this is about roads and culverts and
It wasn't, the motion included
This is about the engineers.
No, the motion included allowing him to move forward with construction.
Because of the asphalt, which is engineers, which is roads, which is culverts, which has nothing
And that was, and that was made for a reason because the town had already issued permits. And you were going to go back and pull permits even for the permits where people were living in, that's what you told us.
Right, so
That's why we made that motion like we did.
So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull back from this conversation, I'm gonna let the board decide whether or not you guys want to make a motion as I recommended or not, because it's really up to you not.
I'm, I'm gonna refuse to withdraw my motion from the other meeting and it was voted on.
If you have questions, you can please ask.
So
What is our legal?
Is this totally about Virgil?
No, 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 it's not, so, so there was, there's
You gotta read this.
Yeah, you gotta read the whole thing because but It has to do with the road that it didn't get the, what is it, observation of, the engineer didn't get to see
Oh, I know that, I know that.
But there's, there were covenants in place that, that he couldn't build there until that road was all done and approved. And technically speaking, by doing what we did, we basically reversed an approval that was done however many years back. They issued permits for it. So the, the permit issuing thing is that, that can be handled through building zoning separately from But what I was saying even at that meeting was you have a guy that buys a lot. He comes in, he gets his building permit and stuff. Now he's building and doing, people are moving in and everything else. Then it comes in front of the board and says, well, we shouldn't have issued those, we're gonna take them back. So the How do you want to take somebody's house away from them? So that, that was not for the board to decide. So that, that's the complexities of building department. So
Why did it come to us?
Well, it came to us because the road was never observed, I mean, it was, it was an epiphany, if you will, a realization that there Yeah.
Want to talk to John?
Yeah, because now you're confusing me too, which is easy to do. Because, no, I said now he's confusing me too, so I gotta because now I'm confused on it.
The problem arises that the applicant owner did not follow the requirements of the subdivision approval or the covenants that he asked to put in place so that he could go forward and build the road. All right, his covenant said that he was not supposed to sell the lots that he did. And, and because because he did not get his construction observations done correctly, and there's no, as far as the town is concerned, there's no asphalt out there. Because the town engineer never went out there because he was never contacted by the owner to come out and do his observations for whatever, for his reasons, whatever. But the issue is, the, and there was an information lack of information transfer. I was not aware of that one, the requirement. I didn't know there were covenants restricting lot sales. If I had, you and I would have never seen each other on those other three houses that you worked on in addition to this one. Because I would have never issued permits for them, because he had, he violated the covenants, the covenant to not sell lots. Until he had permissions, he had met all his requirements to have the road observed and have the board say, okay, now we can remove the covenant to restrict, to restrict the lot sale so you can go forward. All right, so let that boil down to now, and sure, technically, I could say, all right, I'm gonna revoke the COs on these houses and off we go.
Well, that's not
And then that is, that, I mean, technically, I could do that because the law has been broken and the deed covenant's been broken, there's so much crap that's gone on here. I'm not going to do that, and I'm not gonna take people out of their houses.
Yeah, that's why
I'm not going to do, we're not gonna do that, and you know as well as I do that I even came out and did the CO on Oberg's house, so
I don't know what John Oberg is.
The last one before this one.
Oh, that blue one.
Right, that last one, they were, they were, they were, we needed a CO so they could move in. And I didn't restrict that because that doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't do what needs to be done, that only harms the buyers.
Right, that's, that was why I made the motion, I did.
And, and so but we got to a point where one of my favorite sayings is, there's two ways to get a mule's attention. One is with a carrot and the other is with a two by four. Roger and I have been down the two by four. And the carrot wasn't working, we were not getting response, we were not getting what we needed. So that is why, that is why I issued the cease and desist notice for construction and for any and all, anything else going on out there, because we were so far out of the weeds, it's time to get it back on track. So that's why I did it.
I wish you'd come to the last meeting.
I'm not, I'm not in the habit of putting people out of their houses, and there's no need to. And then in
That's where I got the confusion.
We ended up in court, we would lose that argument, because it's not a realistic thing to do. And what we have since negotiated is that they can go forward on construction of the house on lot ten to completion as long, but they can't be issued a certificate of occupancy for that house until
Gets all straightened out.
All, everything's back on track. All right?
That's more than fair.
I, I had that conversation with his attorney.
That's more than fair.
Because that is, we don't have to do that, and at this point, I don't have to do that.
Right.
Because he has already sold that lot in violation of the covenants. I don't know who his title company is. Anyways, so that's where we're at.
Title company.
Whoever the
Could be somebody who's doing the work. Because it's gotta be in the paperwork, that's in the paperwork, right Jess? So that's in the paperwork, the covenants thing?
Yeah, that needed to be finished to be in line
And some of them.
Actually hasn't been done, it's just it wasn't observed by the
He didn't get his observations, I don't know that it's a hundred percent done, Roger, I know there's asphalt down.
Yeah.
You know, I know there's asphalt down, but it, as far as the town is concerned, we have no observation saying that road has, that, that it's been done right, that the subbase is right, you know? We don't have anything because our engineer was never called to go out there and observe.
The information we got at the last meeting
Was just the paper.
That, that the town engineer wasn't called, other engineers were called, all the specifications are there, and that's why we went the way we did.
Well, we don't have that provided to us, we don't have that information in hand still.
Jess.
Don't have that information.
Did he give you all the tests and results?
Right, so can I just speak to what Roger just commented on? So the information that was provided at the last meeting, that it was the applicant's engineer that was on site, not the town engineer.
Right.
And so I
But he was gonna bring in because he did all the testing or whatever and was gonna give them to you all.
Right, right, and we would, we would have another town engineer, the new one, take, take a look at those and make sure there's adequate data and information to make a determination, if, if not, he would make his recommendations and
Right, so, so to answer your question, yes, he has provided those reports, I have met with the town engineer, and he is awaiting an answer back from the applicant as to whether the construction observation escrow estimate is appropriate, which he does have money already in an escrow account to cover that, but he, Scott needs to sign off on that task order
Oh, I
before he does his review, so I have informed him of that, so I'm waiting to hear back from him so that I can relay the information to the town engineer. So we have been working, John and I
Well, John explained a whole lot, that's, I wish he was at the last meet.
And, and that's why I, that's why my recommendation at the last meeting was to put a stop to things, to involve the town code official so that we could move forward and sort things out, that's why I had that recommendation.
And the other, there's, the other part of this is his alteration, alteration of terrain permit expired two years ago. And he needs another one that his engineer has supposed to have been working on the application, but it is not submitted. So
So you're just pulling it back in line.
Another part of getting things back on track, Scott's working on it, we discussed it, he's trying to get his engineer to get the, the application submitted. That's where we're at, but there are a number of things that are just, it's just that far out, it's gotta get back on track.
Okay.
So we just want it on track.
So at this moment, not having been here last week, the process that we need to do, there are three motions here supposedly.
There's, there's just, yeah.
Just one run.
One, one more motion.
Motion.
Be done, make right.
We, in other words, if we rescind, what is the net result?
We're gonna make, make the correct motion after you rescind.
Right. Can we talk about what the correct motion, I don't
All written right out.
Three, so okay, so now before we, before I go over that, if you as a board don't feel that Virgil is in any violation of these conflicts of interest, I suppose that's the first thing you would have to consider, because you would either make a, if you do feel like he's in violation of these, you would make a motion to rescind. If you do not feel like he's in violation of that, you would just make a motion to amend. So it, it's two different, it's two different ways to create a motion.
But I think we have to amend it to
So in this rescinding, you are amending it, it's, it's, it's just a description of two different types of motions, that's all.
One of the things is, in the, in the rules that you cite, part of a conflict of interest is if any of your family members are involved, and Tommy is, is working there, right?
My brother, Tim.
Tim, brother Tim, so he's your brother, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's potentially a conflict of interest, at least it looks like. And, you know, if it looks like it, then it is. And you know, if it looks like it, then it is. Um, so I think the, what Jessica's saying, I'm just trying to figure out how to straighten this out.
I think from an overall. Approach. So, I mean, I, I'm apparently, I didn't realize that I was allowed to make motions when it comes to this.
Why wouldn't you be allowed to make?
No, I thought I was. Yeah. So I'm gonna start off with that I moved to rescind the motion relating to the WW, W and W, excuse me, Ralph Trust LLC discussion. It took place at the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two planning board meeting.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Bill. Any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, abstaining.
Yeah, I think you probably.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I I have a question. Can I vote if I wasn't here at the meeting?
Well, you can vote tonight.
Well, the next vote.
The next.
But on that vote. Exactly, that's why I.
You can't vote to rescind it.
No, that's, I didn't.
The next one you can.
I'm I'm asking dumb questions.
That was a good question.
So Tom is also going to abstain.
Yes.
Okay, so next motion, I move that the applicant send the documentation from SW Cole and Ekman Engineering LLC to the planning department to forward to a new town engineer Dana Huff PE for review to perform a site walk and then submit their findings.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Russ. Any further discussion?
So what we're motioning is what's already been done.
Yes.
Yeah, but we're trying to make.
We're making it all fish official now.
Okay, so we'll, okay, so we're making the motion that we shouldn't have made there that.
And it allows them to do what they.
Back on the right road.
And now this lays it out in an orderly.
It just gets it back on the track that it should be on.
So I, motion made.
Seconded by Russ.
Roger, I had a question. We fixed that.
Yep. So any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, abstentions.
Staying.
Staying. And Tom, you were an aye?
I voted, yeah. I got my button on.
Alright, now I move to continue the discussion of releasing the covenant restricting lot sales to the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Tom.
I will no longer be on the board on the fifteenth. So can I vote tonight or not?
Yeah. Move it to then. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I got discussion again.
Okay.
I can understand things better. I mean, this looks like you wanna remove the covenant so you can sell lots.
It's discussion about the releasing with the, on the idea that we hopefully will have some more solid information from the engineers for our review. If we don't, we'll just have to continue it further.
And if you do, and it's. Tell them exactly what you're gonna do.
Right, I see. So we're gonna move, we're gonna move to discuss, the discussion.
Just the discussion, right.
Alright, yep.
Alright, anyone else? Alright, so that we have motion seconded. All those in favor? Abstention?
Aye.
Alright.
Okay, who seconded that? Drew, you motioned? Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
We're all on track now.
Alright, CIP committee update?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
So it's, it's just so, this is just me talking. No, so I just wanted to let you guys know that the CIP committee, um, we met the end of January. And the we, the discussion was to, um, whether or not they wanted to have the Board of Selectmen create a separate facilities committee. Um, and after about an hour of sort of hemming and hawing back and forth as to, you know, yes, no, yes, no. Um, they ultimately decided that it would be appropriate to have a separate facilities committee. Um, so with that being said, um, I did go to the selectmen this past Monday night. That was yesterday. It's been a long week. So that was last night. Um, and I did address that to the selectmen and they did officially create a uh, facilities committee, um, with myself as the one to head the committee. Um, and to include a Board of Selectmen rep. Um, the code official, um, citizen members. Scott Kimmon, Highway Director and uh, Jim Bowden, Fire Department. I think that was it. So I'm just waiting for the selectmen to create their committee lists and we'll start up from there, I guess.
Waiting for the selectmen to make what?
To make when you guys vote on who's, who's gonna sit on what committee after the town vote. And then from there, we'll figure out, I guess the second one will figure out who sits on that committee. And that's all I'm waiting for. So that's that.
No other planning board?
So a planning, so a planning board representative and a zoning board representative are not recommended only because of the fact that if if the, if there's an application before the zoning board, then that zoning board member would have to recuse themselves because they would be privy to information that the rest of the board and the same thing with the planning board. So a planning board member really shouldn't sit. Um, you know, I as the planner and the representative will come like we do over here, updates for committees. I'll let you guys know what's going on.
Sounds good. I mean, it's been talked about for eons.
So we figured having a separate committee will hopefully help keep that ball rolling. And sort of, you know, sort of hold everybody accountable and actually.
You might find.
Make it work.
Plans to the last time we did this are upstairs here.
Okay.
For a, um, safety facility for fire police.
Yep, yep. That'll be super helpful.
They're old, but.
Yeah.
Twenty-five years old.
Yep, okay.
That's great. Thank you. Uh, master plan update?
Yeah, uh, continuing to work on drafting chapters. I was working today on it with Tara Amford. Uh, we're just about through. I've been copying you too, Jessica.
I was trying to catch up today.
Yeah, um, and doing historic now. I met with Marty Kneelson today. Um, specifically about the railroad trestle down here, trying to get some descriptions of those things. So what's in the historic section is not like a whole history of the town. It's just enough to show you what's going on. But one of the key things is he's gonna help me with is, um, what do we have concerns about potentially losing? And one of them is the old cemeteries and being able to protect them, uh, and be able to get it into them.
Old graveyards.
Old graveyards.
Cemeteries are public, graveyards are private.
Graveyards, thank you. Anyway, uh, there's a lot of them, uh, scattered all over town. Uh, so he's gonna work on that. Um, the other thing is we're gonna meet again on March second.
Second, yep.
And, uh, I don't know about other parts of the, of the drafting. Um, if you do, can, do you know about?
Like other chapters?
Other chapters, yeah.
Um, I haven't really heard much from other people.
She's coming to me next.
Yeah, and, um, uh, Amelia and I have taken over the chapters and the information that Paul Arrosell was going to take care of because he was not gonna run and I think now, well, now he's running again. So, but we've, uh. Yeah, so we've kind of taken that over and that was to, um, meet with Scott and Courtney. That, you know, highway and water and get infrastructure and some water information.
Well, the whole idea is to at least get some drafts put together. That's what we do. We give her the, the information that she rewrites and has suggestions. And then it all kind of comes together as, um, you know, one document. Now, one of the things that I did talk to her about today is that maybe in each section that there be a recommendations at the very end of it, you know, this is all the things and then here's the things that we want to pay attention to. And then have in the back, and this is the way Wolfberg did it, they had a, almost like a table of all the recommendations, who would, who should be leading on doing something about that recommendation? And then what's the status on a particular date? See, so if you have a standing master plan committee.
Yes.
Which would be a. I think it would be a good idea. They could use this table that's been set up in the master plan to help track things and and pay attention to what's going on.
With some accountability, actually.
I like that idea.
And Wolfberg did, it was pretty good.
It's organized.
Yeah, it's organized in.
It takes volunteers.
So, and you know, you could have your CI, standing CIP committee could be, um, people who are interested in those various areas and maybe would pay attention to it. And then make sure they come in front of the planning board and say, hey, we need you guys to maybe get some draft wording for, uh, uh, you know, a warrant article or something, whatever it takes, you know. Uh, but anyways, instead of the thing just sitting on the shelf or actually do something. So anyway, that's where we're at. I don't really have anything else to. Have a, oh, how did the, um, funding go? I didn't go to the.
Oh, deliberative session?
Yeah.
It went.
Uh, yeah, so, so it seemed pretty favorable.
They understood what we.
Yeah, so the funding to, we're increasing her to her full amount that we originally had plus asking for another.
So we're asking for the nine thousand dollars.
To finish the thing on.
Yep.
Well, nine thousand and five thousand.
Yep, yeah, nine thousand for the master plan and then five thousand for, um, a planning and zoning consultant. Okay, but yeah.
Great. Alternative housing.
Uh, so the alternative housing committee, um, so like we were just talking about that five thousand dollar uh, warrant article for a planning and zoning consultant and that seemed to be, um, favorable. Um, so that, that is gonna entail, um, being able to hire a consultant to help us with, you know, uh, a potential short term rental ordinance, um, you know, the open space subdivisions, sort of the, the cabin cottage colonies that we've been talking about. Um, so that I'm kind of waiting again for the town vote to see if that warrant article passes. And then that way I'll be able to see, are we gonna be getting help for a consultant? Or are we back, you know, to square one and kind of, are we doing it all on our own? So I'm kind of waiting to see how that plays out before, um, we pick this committee back up again this year.
Alright, item G, uh, discussion regarding the report. Ridge Road.
Now it's, Ridge Road, is that the one off of Hurley or is that the one down below?
Down below. Alright, so the reason why you guys have this in front of you tonight. Um, I, I did share this memo, the December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one memo with you guys at the December meeting, but if you recall, the December meeting was a monster meeting and we really didn't have time to address this. Um, so the, the biggest issue I have and I don't have an answer for right now until I do some research is the fact that, um, there's one section of the road and it's on this land that's highlighted. So there's a section over there.
I didn't think the town accepted this road yet, did we?
No, not even, we're working towards it, but there's a problem with that section of the road because the slopes are at a three to one. And that's not what the approval is. Um, I gave you some other, um, cross sections of the road so you can kind of see what the slope is leading up to that area and after that area.
But I have a problem with us going in on a private road because they should be doing this, no?
Right, so. So I guess, I guess my point is, I don't know how this was allowed to get like that this late in the game.
That whole subdivision was a little wacky.
Right, so like I said, I need to sort of research. I don't know if some configuration. I don't know if it was addressed at some point. I, I don't know if it just got built wrong.
But.
I don't know.
That's where the contractor walked away from that subdivision.
Correct.
It's still a private road.
It, it is, it's still.
We shouldn't even be looking at these yet. Because if it's a private road, they have to fix this if we want to accept it.
Right, so they actually asked to come in for final road approval. And so, um, I went out with the town engineer and the, um, and Scott, so town engineer and highway, and we did that sort of final walkthrough and then it was pointed out like, hey, that slope is pretty steep.
Town engineer's time?
Yes, so yeah, yep.
Yeah, so this is a regular part of the process.
Yes.
And the processes of us trying to accommodate their requests.
Yep, so I'm just.
Found this.
Yeah, so I'm just kind of pointing out like it's not built.
Oh, we knew.
Right, it's more so this like one section. So I need to figure out what happened. Why was that not addressed? How was that overlooked?
Actually, Nutter was the good guy in this case. He came back and did a lot of work that he didn't need to. It was the, it was the developer rosebud.
Let me ask you this. Were you gonna have them going and changing slopes?
So. I hate to get into this discussion again, but there were excess escrow funds that were left over.
Right.
There's, there's like roughly eight thousand dollars that the, all of the property owners were allowed to use the leftover funds to fix whatever they needed. Whether it was, you know, grubbing, uh, you know, clearing out the ditches, uh, cleaning out the catch basins, whatever it may be. They have, there's eight thousand dollars left.
Oh, we agreed to it for the roadside mowing because they cut everything back down there.
Yep.
And there was one other thing.
Those are the ditches, I think.
And that was all we agreed on that.
Right, so, so what I'm talking, what I'm talking about is took place after that, when we were talking about Evans Hill Road.
Yeah.
And that whole merger that took place, that, so what I'm talking about took place during those discussions. So with the town council said whatever's left over, those property owners can use to get to final road approval so they can get to the selectmen.
Yeah, but, um, I think he's wrong. But you'll find he's wrong.
I know. Well, how do you fix that at this point?
He's got the legal degree though.
I don't care if you've got a legal degree.
Right, but that was, that was the advice of town council at the time and I, I can't, I can't go back on that now. It, it's.
It was just roadside mowing in the catch basins. Cleaning the ditch line, the road, the mowing of the brush and stuff on the sides of the road. And that's what was agreed to, to spend the money on. The rest was supposed to stay in escrow, not whatever they needed. You ain't changing many slopes for eight grand.
I'm, I'm gonna have to pull out that discussion again, as much as I hate to do that again. Thanks, Virgil. Um, I will pull that out yet one more time. And just to clarify what, exactly what was stated, so.
So what do we have to do? Make a letter up to send to these people on what they're gonna have to do?
So they've, they've received this report from like, I've sent it, uh, to Tammy Musso. She's kind of. Um, so I'm, I, I guess tonight, my, my point is to just, uh, make the make you aware that. There's a problem and, um, it needs to be, it needs to be fixed. So I just wanted to sort of maybe have it on record as well that we're trying.
To be fixed and the selectmen told them that.
Well, this is the part.
Pretty much, just letting you know that.
Right, and this is. Why we're still involved in this if it's still a private road. If it's a private road, they should be doing it.
Yeah, but.
Right, because they, they requested in a, they requested final road approval with the board, which is why I'm, I'm having this discussion with you. So in order for them. Right, so in order for them to come for final road approval, this needs to get fixed. So I'm just letting you know.
Alright.
This needs to get fixed somehow.
The original driveway profiles were borderline, you know, roadway profiles were borderline to begin with. I mean, they were a sketchy whole area right there.
Whole road fell apart.
Well, the thing was, uh, uh, as I understood it, when they did the, they missed one whole valley. That's why we got a washout. Well, the thing was, uh, uh, as I understood it, when they did the, they missed one whole valley. That's why we got a washout. But the mapping was done from, um, not from the ground, but aerial photos.
Yeah.
You know, it wasn't surveyed, it was interpreted.
Okay, yeah.
Does that explain anything to you?
Yeah, that explains a lot. I've built projects like that.
That where the road fell apart?
No, oh, no, no, just, you know, extra seven hundred thousand of led removals, but alright, moving along. Uh, new business, uh, approval of the minutes?
Take a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Sounded like a hopping meeting.
I'll second that.
I wasn't here, so I can't vote.
Alright, seconded by Bill O'Neill. Any further comments?
You would be abstaining, Tom?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and Tom is abstaining. Uh, no correspondence for the board's review of information, uh, any other business to come before the board? Public input, uh? So you've been patiently waiting your way through?
He's done. Jess shot it up. There's still quite a bit of information in this, I'll pack it.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
I don't quit.
Who don't know me, I'm Raymond Howard. And, uh, I'm your, one of your town reps, state reps. Why I'm here tonight is, I just wanna make sure that, I'm assuming you're probably aware of House, uh, Senate Bill four hundred? That's going through the legislature right now?
I haven't had a chance to share Senate bills or House bills with the board yet.
Enlighten us.
Okay, well, this is, this is a, uh, like a bill that was proposed a couple of years back that I don't believe any part of it got signed into law. Uh, I did discuss it back then with Scott Williams. And the board felt that there was, uh, you know, there was nothing that they were concerned about, which didn't, I didn't agree with, but that's alright. Um, but anyways, it's, it's resurfaced in a new piece of legislation. And, you know, for the most part, it's, it's enabling. The purpose is, uh, well, it's an act relative to the training and procedures of zoning and planning board and the relative financial investment and incentives for affordable housing development. That's the basic analysis of it. And, uh, it's, like I said, most of it's enabling, but there are some mandates. And it has passed out of the Senate. It hasn't come to the House yet. But there's some things in it that I felt were a little troubling, and I don't know how the board will feel about it, but I wanted to make sure that you're aware of this legislation. As, as you read, I'm not gonna go through this whole thing, but I'm gonna leave you this copy and you can make copies for the members.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but some of the things that I'm concerned about is, um, in the part four, uh, they're talking about, uh, if a municipality allows an increase in density, reduction in lot size, uh, expedited approval or other dimensional procedural incentives under the section for the development of housing for the elderly. You also have to allow those same exemptions and same incentives for, um, the creation of, uh, workforce housing. And I know, I believe we have some.
You said affordable housing before, and th- this time you said workforce housing.
Well, it's, it's, it's workforce housing and affordable housing.
Oh, so it's both?
Workforce housing is affordable housing, what they're.
Oh, okay, it's a huge difference.
Well, I know there's difference and, and they've, they're trying to tie it in together.
Yeah, and we do have something in place already that inclusionary zoning is what we call it.
Right, so the inclusionary zoning is mentioned in here.
Yep.
Several times. You know, like I said, you can read through, uh, one of the, one of the interesting things I found about. I think this is a new board they're putting, they want to assemble, it's called the Advisory Board. Are you aware of an advisory board under the, uh, the Office of Planning and Development?
I haven't heard of that yet, no.
No, okay, so.
It came up years ago, didn't it?
Hmm?
Didn't that come up years ago?
About the same bill.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah, so they, they're trying to reestablish this, they're trying to get this put into statute, so. Uh, the thing I find troubling about this, uh, advisory board is the membership. Uh, there's like seventeen members and only two really, um, would be, you know, sensitive to our needs is, is the town. Uh, they have one member of the Senate, two members of the House, uh, commission, uh, Commissioner of Department of Business and Economic Affairs, uh, Director of Business Finance Authority, Executive Director of the Hampshire Housing Finance, you know, it's all the special interest groups. And they're behind this and, um, you know, there's other, you know, the, they're going to create some incentives for the towns to, uh, allow this type of housing and zoning in. And, uh, our own New Hampshire Municipal Association, uh, has a statement here in the, uh, in the, uh, methodology, the methodology of how they try to determine the financial impact. A couple of their comments where the provisions for our, say, one sixty-two K and one, and seventy-nine E uh, may experience a shift in property tax revenues without necessarily increasing or decreasing such revenues. Well, the shift means one thing. The tax burden is put onto someone else to give this type of housing a tax break. There's also gonna be an expedited process for anybody who wants to appeal a denial. So you can, you know, like, look that, and another comment that was, uh, uh, this was from the Department of Revenue and Administration.
Oh, they're gems.
So, you know, one line in here talking about, uh, seventy-nine E and the grant tax relief under the expanded duration period, you'll read about the duration period, because the, this tax break is gonna be anywhere from three years to eight years and, you know, can re, be renewed continuously, I think, the way this reads. Uh, but it says, uh, during a duration period will, uh, experience a redistribution of the overall tax burden. Referring to, you know, the.
Everybody else pays.
The other residents in the community, so, um, I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of this. And, uh, where it has passed the Senate, it will be coming before the House, and if anybody after looking at this wants to, come and testify, uh, that'd be great. I'll, uh, I'll work with any member that wants to do that. And also, there was a, I get this business, New Hampshire magazine, I don't know if anybody gets this. Couple interesting articles in here this month. One is on zoning. And, uh, basically they're trying to blame the, the towns for the problem with zoning. And the cost of, uh, the cost of houses and, you know, the, uh, the other article is um, basically about housing and, uh, you know, it's saying the community is slowly welcoming more affordable housing. Being in construction like Bridget knows, the biggest creator of, of the increase in housing has been government interference. So.
Actually, it was the pandemic.
Yeah, so anyways, I'm gonna leave these two things here for, for you folks to look over.
Right, okay.
And, uh, like I said, I'm, you know, I'm your rep, you know? I, I don't know how these things affect you as a board until I hear from you, so I just, you know.
Do you, do you have a, is there a date as to when that bill is scheduled in front of the House?
Not yet, not yet. Uh, they will, uh.
Yes, yes, the month.
Well, it just came out of.
Yeah, I think crossover, what we call crossover is in late March sometime. So after that, then, uh, all the bills that come from the Senate will be.
Subcommittee.
Uh, put to the different House committees for, for hearings. So it'd be, you know, it'd be sometime in April, one likely.
Yeah, and just so you know, I did sign up for the NHMA Legislative Committee, just so I can be, you know, be on that list and be involved and sort of get the explanations of a lot of these Senate bills and House bills that come out.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's really helpful.
They're, they're always at these, they have their own group of lobbyists that show up at all these hearings. And, uh, sometimes I don't like the way they represent us, but, you know, uh, they, but that's, you know.
At least I get helpful information, you know, yeah.
I remember one hearing, which was wonderful, it was the gravel removal people who were, um, they were going to strip the gravel off, and they, one of their strong arguments, we're gonna increase the recharge value. Well.
It's almost something, right?
Not much storage, but increase the recharge, less filtration, you know, so there, you know, a lot depends on who's talking and who's listening.
Right, and, and words are very important, especially when you look at legislation, uh, the two biggest words are shall and may.
Yeah, and, and sometimes they try to cover all zones as opposed to, obviously, you know, we don't want to put affordable housing in the Lake Shore residential. You know, that would not, that would be cutting off our nose for sure. Uh, so I mean, you have to look at it from a point of view of, of planning, uh, what each town has as a specialty.
Well, you know, the way I look at this kind of legislative, this is an attempt to take over local control. Take local control away and put it into an advisory board at the state.
They're also realizing that there's a real shortage of housing in New Hampshire.
Oh, big time.
And the communities are struggling to respond. The communities are struggling to respond to that need.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And so now they're trying to force a hand.
But then again, you look at real estate. You know, the companies that sell housing.
If it's there, it's sold.
It's a reversible right now.
When a, when a house was selling for a hundred and fifty thousand, they were getting five percent commission.
Yeah.
Alright, which was what, five, six thousand dollars on the sale of a house? They're still getting five or six percent commission on a million dollar house, which is fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, you know, they love flipping houses.
But you also gotta reverse balloon right now, because you're paying for a house that's normally selling at three ninety-nine, you're paying six ninety-nine. So later it's gonna come back at three ninety-nine, you're gonna be upside down again.
Because they, they still, you know, that increase, and so, you know, and, and so the buyer, when he goes to sell, he says, well, it's gonna cost me another fifty grand to sell this to the real estate, so I'm gonna jump the price up, you know, and that's, you know, it just escalates. What, what are you gonna do? That's the nature of it, and, uh, I don't know, it's, uh, no easy answers.
Yeah, build the wall.
Well, okay, you wanna talk about the wall? I was reading it's over two.
Yeah, we're, we're way off topic now, guys.
Yeah, this is, this is very, there's over two million of these people have come into the country since.
Yeah.
January first.
We're outside of planning board.
Definitely off topic.
Material here, so.
New Hampshire and Vermont.
Yeah, no, we're, you guys can, you guys can save this for your Friday nights, you know, and.
But consider this, New Hampshire and Vermont are two hun, two million people.
Yeah. So. Mister Howard, I appreciate your, your, uh, information that you brought to us and, uh, and, and I'm sure Jessica will get that to us, uh, so that we can review.
Actually, let me, uh, I'll give you, I got a card, I think.
Okay. Um, so, uh, be, before we close out, um, you know, Virgil and Russ, uh, I guess you guys have decided you've, you've done your, your duties and we, I just wanna say thank you.
For a while.
Russ is just cutting back a little bit. So I may be here one more night because.
March first.
March first, right?
Yeah.
I just can't wait. And I'll be back.
I thought I had it made, I had one more meeting.
You're not gonna know what to do with yourself.
For that one, but.
Oh, you'll be at town meeting.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
You'll be at town meeting.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Sasha.
I don't know if I can do this, but I thought you were the Virgil earlier. She was saying that Brock was probably gonna be the selectman member. I was telling him that, I said, he, he never showed up at any CIP.
But that was because he's a DPW director over Milton, so he had the same meetings that we're having here, he's having over there.
Yeah, that's what happened.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was doing his budgets over there, because he runs the, um, wastewater.
Yep.
He runs the water department and the town.
Oh, okay. I, I think he would be, I think he'd be a good, be a good asset to the board, the same.
Yeah, I asked him last night.
So where was he doing it?
Nope.
Always in Milton.
Yeah, he does the. Rock.
Rock.
Rock, water, water treatment and the DPW director.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Not me.
Yeah, the, the Milton used to have, uh, green tanning used to be over there. There was tannery, yeah. So they had a whole wastewater system, that's right, yeah.
Alright, I'll entertain one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
By the second? The second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Ladies, thank you. Yeah, well, no, I mean, for the.
Not about the last first meeting.
Oh, yeah.
My little cheat sheet for it. Uh, so.